Okay. Good afternoon, Mayor O'Neal, Mayor Protem Middleton, City Council members. I am Bertha Johnson, Deputy City Manager for Operations. I am delighted to be here today to provide you an update on American Rescue Plan funding. I want to take the opportunity to introduce my team. Some are existing, were existing city employees and some we hired into this process. I would say more than not, most of them have not worked in local government before. So we've had a, had a fun time getting up to speed on our local government bureaucracy and the way in which we follow through with our processes and procedures. And we also have some other folks in the room who you'll hear from later in the presentation. So we have Robert Morales here, who is our Senior Manager for Grants. We have Victoria Samayor, Administrative Coordinator, Scott Strain, who is our Grants Writer, and Shayla Light, Senior Grants Accountant. And one other person I want to mention on our team is Carlos Hernandez in the City Attorney's Office. And I would have to say Carlos spends a significant amount of his time working with us. And so we appreciate the City Attorney's Office for allowing him to spend so much time with our team. So just as a reminder, most of these slides you have seen before. The American Rescue Plan is an extraordinary federal policy response to the COVID-19 pandemic. It is also a historic opportunity for us to deal with some of our longstanding racial and economic inequalities and pandemic exposed issues. We at the City of Durham received 51.8 million, Durham County 62.4. And we'll talk later about how we can collaborate to leverage our resources. So again, the American Rescue Plan funding, it's, it's very flexible around, you know, the categories that you can use. But we have also some final rules who are a little bit more, more stringent. But I'll talk about the, the top four here. Revenue replacement, respond to far-reaching public health, provide premium pay, which we did for many of our employees, water, sewer, land, infrastructure. So when we found out that we were going to receive this funding, we came to City Council. Some of you were not here at the time. And we proposed a process. And we started out with an internal process, which was, which was advised to us by the award notice. So we went to our internal departments to look at what we needed as an organization. We also proposed to City Council that we bring back those ideas to City Council for approval, which we did. And then we embarked upon a community engagement activities to go out to the community and ask the community what they believe we needed to use these funds for related to the COVID pandemic. So here was our initial timeline. We wanted to have engagement, review, you know, allocation, and again, evaluation at the end of the process, which will happen not only with us, but also from U.S. Treasury and the federal government. I wanted to remind you all that this process, during this process, we gathered a lot of information from our residents. We hosted community events. We developed a survey in partnership with Durham County, North Carolina Central University, and community-based organizations to increase public awareness. We advertised this opportunity in the newspaper as well as other magazines and broadcast. We placed and we shared this information during the PB process. We utilized contacts gained through many of our other outreach opportunities like PB and the Comp Plan. We also sent out email blasts to all residents and folks who had engaged with us in different ramps in the city to make sure they were aware of this funding. More than 80 proposals were received during the deadline and were reviewed for eligibility. And we'll talk later about the different projects that were initially funded. And we engaged in partnership with Durham, Durham County, again, North Carolina Central University, and NIS and our Office of Equity and Inclusion. North Carolina Central University actually had specific hosts who worked with us. We had Dr. Henry McCord. We had Dr. Harper, as well as Dr. Page, who actually served as the host, who were bringing folks to the table to engage. And they helped us actually design the engagement process. Again, we had two community-wide events. You may recall that we started out with those events, calling those events budget healing events. That was a term that came to us from, at the time, Councilmember Prelon, who had proposed we do budget healing events. And once we received this funding, we thought, wow, now we can have funding to support the information that we get and the proposals we get from the community. So again, we received over 300 survey responses. The survey responses were not necessarily proposal. They were just ideas or people's comments about how we should use the money to support the community. But the final actually proposals, that number was 80. So during one of our events, we asked the participants to rank the following eligible uses in order they think should be prioritized. As you can see here, number one, economic impacts, and the last one, water, sewer, infrastructure. And you all have seen these slides before, but I just wanted to remind everyone how we got to where we are and the decisions we made in the first round of funding. We then went back to those residents, whoever showed up, residents showed up at the second event. And we asked them, so what criteria do you think is most important in evaluating proposals? And as you can see here, the number one is racial equity. But actually, we paused for a minute. We worked with Equity and Inclusion to actually create an equity tool to use for that criterion. So we created a matrix, and these were the components, the criterion in that matrix. Eligibility, obviously, is first. That is based on U.S. Treasury eligibility, which is why you had eight proposals and you ended up with 34, because they had to be eligible based on those guidelines. And again, equity impact, that was where the equity tool determined whether the project was equity-based. Collaboration, we wanted to make sure that the proposals actually collaborated with other organizations or the community. There may be other nonprofit organizations who were doing the same, who had the same mission, and we wanted them to do that collaboration. Obviously, we wanted it to align with our goals. We wanted the proposals to be community-driven. We asked them, did you go out into the community? How did you talk to the community about this? How do you know that this is what's needed in the community? So during COVID, obviously, a lot of times that was really surveys, or that was information that they already had, because they've already been working in the community. And then administration, we looked at how feasible was the proposal for us to administer in the organization, as well as look at the data collection and all the other requirements of the funding. And the last criterion was to qualify a census tract, which is the HUD tract that was provided to us by U.S. Treasury. So how do we ensure the investments align with federal guidelines and community priorities? We received lots of proposals, the 80, and we put those into these groups here, health and wellness, safe, stable housing, economic equity, and community resiliency. And as you may recall, we had, at the beginning, we had one category, education. And we removed education based on feedback from council, and we changed it to the community category. Just to remind you all, we had review committees made up of county employees, city employees, and residents. So at those events, we asked residents, if you're interested in participating in the review process, let us know, and we will put you on a team based on your interest as well as your experience. Some, we also had some volunteers who did not submit their project on time, send us a proposal. It was past the deadline, so we invited them to participate on the, on one of the committees in order to be part, still be part of the process. So here is some of the data about our review committee participants. So in December, we gave you all an update, and we shared with you our thoughts around how we should move forward in making decisions about which proposals we fund. In May of 2021, council selected which proposals would be awarded at 70% of the original requested amounts. So we had, you all had the big spreadsheet, which you have as part of your agenda packet. You all looked at the spreadsheet. We had recommendations to, to fund at 100%. The staff recommendation, at 100%, those were the score of 24 or, or above. City Council looked at the spreadsheet, went away, had an opportunity to review those proposals, came back and thought all of those proposals were good proposals, and decided to fund them at 70%, maximum 1 million to all proposals. At 70% of the funding request, maximum 1 million. So, and that is really important, important to point out as we think about transformation, where some of the proposals came back to us and said, we propose, you know, 5 million or, or something really big. We're only going to get 70% or max of 1 million. And so we talked about how we would be coming back to City Council, where you may focus on a smaller subset of those, or one of the particular categories that we mentioned in the earlier slide. City Council also deferred some proposals for City Council, City County consideration based on the county allocation determination. At the time, Durham County had not gone through their process. So you all asked us to hold those and maybe revisit those after we had, after Durham County finished their process. And they actually started with us, and they went through a different process where they selected categories upfront and then looked at the organizations that could meet the requirements of, of those categories. So it wasn't really a, a match. The funded project proposals worked with staff to draft agreements. You've seen many of those outlining the terms, conditions, and reporting requirements. As I mentioned in the last update, this took quite a bit of time, because by the time we came back to those proposals, we were under the final rules. And the final rules required us to collect more data. It changed the eligibility. It changed the documents and the, and the qualification data that we had to collect as an organization to be in compliance. So it was basically like starting over again with the organizations. So it took a lot of patience and a lot of back and forth to get those scopes created and also have all of our, every agenda item that came to you all and the contracts, we actually sent those through the Attorney's Office. In some cases, they met with the school of government or other, you know, authorities to ensure that before they passed that on to you all, that they felt comfortable that those projects were eligible. And that was a good process. And I'll talk about some of the other things we did in the interim between when you gave us that, that directive and we came back to you with those items. So again, the approved proposals, we had 17 in economic equity, nine in community resiliency, six in stable, safe and stable housing, and two in health and wellness, 20.6 million. So what happened next? We hired a grants manager, we, Robert. We organized our ARPA team, as you see here, in addition to Carlos. And Fred initially began this process with us, because it required a lot more work to create the, the policy. We developed the policy because that is what was recommended as a best practice. Not all cities created a, a separate policy, but we agreed that that was a best practice. And we wanted to do that, because we know people don't always stay in the same place and wanted to make sure over the years that there would be continuity in applying these funds and approving proposals. We developed templates with the Attorney's Office for the sub, the sub-recipient agreement and sub-award agreements and the local agreements when we were working with the county and other government agencies and memorandum of understanding for those proposals that were internal departments. We had one-on-ones with every single organization multiple times, probably not as efficient as we would have wanted the process to be, but we were learning as we were going along. And so sometimes we met with them, we went back, we found out that we needed to get additional information, or they submitted documents, we sent them to the Attorney's Office, we went back. So if you hear that from organizations, it is absolutely true. There were times when we had to meet with them on multiple occasions, but, but, you know, it all worked out in the end. We had to, again, rework the scopes. What we realized again is when organizations submitted their proposals, they may have submitted that proposal on 5 million, or 1 million, or 2 million. And then we said, you're going to get, you know, 1 million, or if they, you know, some other amount. We had to go back and say, now give us a scope based on that funding and give us metrics based on that funding. And so that was a, that required some time, as organizations had to work through their programs and services to come back and give us that data. So we submitted agreements to departments for review. Again, if it was a related department, you know, we thank community development when they were priorities related to housing or, you know, rental assistance to those proposals, we reached out to them and met with them for them to help us understand the proposals and make sure they were in alignment with what we were trying to accomplish in community development and not redundant, duplicative, and in the work that they're doing. So we appreciate that. So again, that was one example, a department that we met with to talk about the proposals, where we had subject matter experts in the organization. And then we had to create a monitoring process. We needed to make sure that we could explain to the proposals, to the organizations, what the requirements would be around monitoring. And I would say, we had some organizations, we had several, who to this day have not committed to the funding, because they have not committed to the monitoring process because of capacity. And that's a, that's a major, a major issue that we're trying to work through. And even concerns around those who have, are accepting the funding, but it's yet to, it, it remains to be rescined if they actually have the capacity to do the monitoring, which would require the staff to do more in terms of making sure that the city of Durham is safe in terms of, you know, spending the, the federal dollars. So here are the lists of the agreements that have come through City Council today. These are, a lot of the ones were in the, in the top of the list, because they had the highest score. They already had probably received large grants. They may have already received federal funding. They were the easiest organizations to create the scope and get the contracts through the process. So the discussion we really want to have today is around the remaining funding. And I wanted to remind you of what we've already done, what the process is like, as you think about, you know, how you want to use the remaining funding, 22.56 million. So I want to start out talking about potential joint city-county affordable housing efforts. Again, we wanted, we want to look at how we can leverage our resources and collaborate with Durham County and anyone else who has, you know, money to put to this to accomplish some of our, some of our goals. As you recall, in December, community development put out a request for proposals for affordable housing, to, to supplement financing for affordable housing developments, utilizing low-income housing tax credits. A total of nine projects were received. We actually funded four of the projects at 16.8 million. And we funded four, because that was all the funding we had available for the projects. What you see on your screen here are the remaining four projects. So we, based on those projects coming forward and based on the feedback, we assume that those are projects we're still very much interested in actually implementing. And because Durham County is interested in contributing some of their ARPA funds to affordable housing, and this amount is 20.9 million needed. And again, we want to commit to the dollar amount, not necessarily the exact amount for each project. As you all know, it's, some time has passed, and we'll need to get some updates. But we want to make that commitment, if we're going to make that, so that we can go back to Durham County and say, you know, we're willing to commit 10 million if you all commit 10 million, which was the initial number that we shared with, with Durham County. And again, Reginald Johnson is here today if you have questions about the projects. So the second group of projects were the projects on the list that you all deferred for joint city-county consideration. Again, the county's process changed to be different in categories versus looking at the specific organizations. As you may recall, we shared all of our proposals with Durham County, and they participated in our engagement process. But they, their process changed in the end in terms of how they actually decided how, which organizations to fund. On this list, I think there are two that Durham County is planning to fund. That is YMCA, and there's, I think it's the, it's the main, yes, It Takes a Village project. Those are two that they are committed to some type of funding. Now, when you look at the numbers here, obviously, these numbers are the initial requests. They haven't been reduced, as you did with the other organizations. So this is a second, I guess, option, to revisit these projects. They came in with the initial batch of projects. There were initial proposals. They came in within the, the deadline of project proposals. We have not done anything else with these projects. So the third list of projects I have here are projects that came in after our deadline. Those projects may have come through the ARPA email address. They may have come to the city manager. They might have come to all of you, most of you. I'm sure all of you have seen these products in one form or another, but they've come through and the request was tied to ARPA funding. And so we put those on the list, primarily to be transparent that they came through as a request of ARPA funding. But some of them, you've heard from these folks recently in council meetings, and some you may not have, but if you have questions about those, I'm happy to try to answer those questions. But I, I feel like you're probably familiar with all of these requests. And the last group of projects, we, as we accepted projects that came from outside the organization after the deadline, we also have two projects that we're interested in that came from internal departments. General Services submitted a request for funding for, for the Urban Forestry Division for Tree Planting Initiative. And this is really focused on the canopy, and it's around the data around reducing energy costs in underserved neighborhoods by 50% by increasing the tree canopy. And the folks from General Services are here also, if you have questions about that, that request. And then we have another one from General Services, Solarize the Triangle Initiative. And this is really focused on how do we actually help solarize homes for residents and, and low-to-mature-income households to help reduce their electricity bills? And, and that would, I believe that is 16 to 20 eligible households will be addressed with this funding. And so again, I'm not very familiar with this program, but we have the folks in the room who are happy to answer any questions you might have. So again, what we, we're asking for is feedback on how to prioritize the remaining funds. We, the team will continue to, you know, once we hear back from you all, we'll work on establishing guidelines and processes based on these proposed ideas or requests, as well as any of those that you all have. Again, we still have to, once the decision is made, we still have to go back through the process. We have to refine the scope, determine if the projects are eligible, and complete the required documentation, set up the monitoring, meet with the organizations. And so the process does not change, but we need to get guidance on how you all want to prioritize the, the remaining funds. So here's our proposed timeline, which is where we are now, February to April, council select projects or initiatives. And then we go through, again, our, our process. And then we negotiate contracts. Again, if those were, depends on what the proposals are, where those contracts get negotiated. Obviously, if those are affordable housing process, it would be the community development team and not our team. And then council, the contracts will come back to you all again, as they always do for final decision-making. So just as a reminder, we are always have our website up. We have our ARP@DurhamCity.gov email for, for our residents and folks to contact us. We have our website up. As we always do, we'll put this up on the website for residents to look at this discussion so that they have questions or concerns, they can share that feedback with you or the staff as well. And so we try to make sure we keep that as updated as possible, which is why we send folks to our webpage when they have questions about events or upcoming council meetings about this, this topic, which is why you might have some, a lot of interest today. So that is the end of my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions. I am sure the manager is here as well to support me in that, because we've had a lot of conversations about these proposals. It's, it's a tough decision.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I'm going to let, I have a couple of residents signed up to speak on the presentation, so I want to let them go ahead and speak. The person I have right now is JB Buxton, and I don't know, I think he's here with us. And then I wasn't sure, Madam Clerk, if there's anyone on Zoom that signed up.
There's one individual on Zoom, Pamela Andrews, but she did not indicate which item number she would like to speak to.
Okay. After we let Mr. Buxton speak, we'll ask which item. Thank you.
Okay. That's fine.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Could you please state your name?
JB Buxton.
Thank you.
President Durham Tech.
And you have three minutes.
32 Beverly Drive, although if the college 1637 East Lawson. Council members, I appreciate the opportunity to come speak to you. I want to make sure you know a couple of things about our affordable housing project. I first want to say, we feel fortunate to be in a city and county that has made this one of its highest priorities. And we want to be part of that solution. And I say that on behalf of our Board of Trustees, our Foundation Board of Directors, our faculty staff, and our students. We know this issue well at Durham Tech. We did a study a number of years ago with Temple University that included 700 of our students, and we found that 50% of our students had experienced some level of housing insecurity. 20% had experienced homelessness in the past year. No doubt, the pandemic has accelerated some of those trends. We want to be part of the solution in improving the housing stock of affordable housing in Durham. And we have a proposed project. If you look at the four or five that are on there, the Mosaic project is the Durham Tech project. We have Mosaic Nonprofit Housing, Affordable Housing Development Partner, as well as Bank of America Community Development Corporation, which is a subsidiary of Bank of America. That's our lender on the project that does affordable housing and mixed income projects. We have about six and a half acres of developable land on South Briggs, a great transportation route access to 147 across North Carolina Career Center, about 0.9 walking distance from our main campus, where we can build 124 units of affordable housing that would be split between 30%, below 30%, and below 60% AMI. We've also had some good conversations with DHA about opportunities to use Section 8-based housing vouchers to create even additional 30%. What I want you to know about this development is that we subjected it to a rigorous community engagement process. We hired Partnership for Southern Equity to come in. They have experience doing this kind of work in communities and getting deep community engagement about what potential residents, community members live in the area want to see out of an affordable housing project. They came in, we did four different sessions, had great attendance, including Councilwoman Freeman's mom at one point, who joined one of our sessions, to look at what we needed to do and actually revised our site plan based on community input and feedback, both in terms of the kind of amenities of the project, as well as this site plan itself. And so we are excited about this project. With this gap funding, together with a 4% Lytech funding, we would be ready to move. We believe we have about 25% of those 124 units that we could make available for our students based on their eligibility under Lytech, and then about 75%, which would be available to the community at large. So I just wanted you to know about this high-priority project for Durham Tech. We want to be part of this solution with you and the community, and we appreciate your consideration.
Thank you so much. Madam Clerk, do we, do we know if, which item?
I'm unable to tell. We have to ask her directly in open session.
Okay. Madam Clerk, has she raised her hand to speak?
She's not raised her hand.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm going to now see if any of my council colleagues have any questions or comments. Mayor? Okay. Councilmember Williams?
Sure. Thank you. The, Madam Deputy City Manager Johnson, long titles. Is there a timeline in which organizations that were identified to receive funding, is there a timeline in which they have to make a commitment?
You mean the timeline for the U.S. Treasury, which is December 2024? That's, we have to have the funds.
You were saying there were some that had not committed yet because of the monitoring or something?
Oh, yes, those. So we have not, we're still working with those organizations. I think we have one that our General Services Department is working with, trying to find an alternative to help them with their monitoring. That's around the arts grant. And then we have one that we think is going to withdraw totally. So there will be some additional funds if we cannot work those proposals out. Some may require, we may be able to find a fiscal sponsor for them to help with the financial reporting burden, but we, we've not given up on those organizations yet, but we're continuing to work with them.
Awesome. And, and let me just say this. I've been listening in on the work you all are doing, and the amount of support that you all are providing folks is just impeccable. Thank you for strengthening our community through these organizations by providing them that type, that level of support that they normally wouldn't have. You know, a lot of businesses went through that during the pandemic. So if you haven't heard, thank you. Thank you to you all. President Buxton, first, nice colored tie. And thank you for the work that you all are doing in solving many, helping to solve many of the, the issues that we collaboratively face in our community. many of the, the issues that we collaboratively face in our community. Lastly, Ms. Johnson. So are we, are we beholding to the process now? Because I know we identified, we identified the organizations, but this was the previous council, identified the process where we were identifying organizations at which we were funded. Now we have this next tranche of money. Are we just locked in continuing funding these organizations that were not funded the first time, or do we get to select--
Absolutely not.
--new process?
Absolutely not. So the organizations that were deferred, you all deferred them, I think, in hopes of collaborating with the county--
Right.
--leveraging our resources with the county. You, it's up to the pleasure of the council whether you want to revisit those proposals at this point, or you want to move forward with other of your other ideas or initiatives and the others that are listed in the presentation. It was, and I guess I could ask those of you who worked on the subcommittee, is that what you were thinking in terms of deferring those for discussion at this point, that you would make that decision at this point based on if we were able to, to leverage some resources with the county?
I, I, I think we, we, just as the states, I believe we said we would put, refer these because they were more aligned with what the county was focusing on. Colleagues correct me if I'm wrong, but there was nothing concrete, if I remember correctly.
That's my understanding, yes.
Thank you.
O'Neil, sorry.
Thank you all for a, a great presentation, but more importantly, all the work that I know you all have put into making this happen. It required the hiring of additional folk and knowing on the contract side what that looks like, there is an enormous amount of work that has to go in to individualize all those contracts. So to think that we come back today and you all have executed 34 contracts and are actually getting that money out the door is, is a momentous and commendable feat. That, that's, that's, that's amazing work. And then the monitoring process, you know, that, that's also going to be a challenge for all who will have to do that, because at the end of the day, if our organizations are not successful in meeting the goals and objectives outlined by the federal government, they will be looking to get that money back. And so, and once it is expended, if those organizations, for whatever reason, would not have that money back in the event that they are not able to comply with those regulations, which is why I, I am thankful that those who are struggling with whether they can maintain that kind of system to kind of be answerable to, that they are reconsidering it. Because it is, it has serious implications when you talk about $22 million out there that we'll have to monitor over some year's time, make sure that people are doing exactly what they can and are capable of doing. And if not, then the taxpayers of Durham City will be advancing those funds back to the government. So I just want to, which is one of the reasons why, as I came into this process, I have to be honest, as a, as an attorney and a former judge, I was really leery about doing all of those individual contracts, because it's just fraught with fail, with the ability to fail and you not be able to catch that in a timely manner to recoup those funds. And so, thinking about the fact that, that the city attorney's office was going to have to go through all of these contracts, along with all of the other work that they are now doing, it caused me a little bit of angst, because that's a lot of work. It's a lot of work on the attorneys, it's a lot of work on your staff, in addition to what you're always already doing. And I have people, tell people a lot of times, you know, you have about 2,500 people who work for the city of Durham and a city of 350,000. And most of the work that they do, we take for granted, because your water's clean, your, your, your streets are minimally in doing better in that area, but there's a lot of work that these people do every day. So I was a little concerned when they say, wow, we're going to get 30 nonprofits, individual contracts that they have to monitor for two or three years? That's a lot of pressure. And I wanted the city of Durham to understand that, which gets to my second part. Keeping that in mind, I do think that we have a couple of issues that we have made as a council, the forefront of our conversations, and that's affordable housing. When I got here, the city of Durham had already gone through RFP process, and they were able to fund four, seven, four of the seven, four of eight projects that they had deemed ready to go and the city could check off. They were only able to fund four. And as we looked at that list, I saw Durham Tech is trying to do something that will put us on the map as one of those programs, right? A community college that will have housing. Who knows anybody else that's doing that? Nobody. Then when you look at the other three houses, we have folk who, at least one of those have already begun to develop, and this will be part two, I think, on the East Gear Street Residential.
That's part two.
That's part two is Sandy Ridge Villas. There's another group, that's a local group in this, that is some local, LGB, that is minority and business owned local organization. And at the end of that, after talking with the county, the county is willing to help share that burden. And so the city officials and the county officials have come up with a way that we could possibly forgive these folk $20 million, taking half of our ARPA funds from each. So for me, that is a great balance, because then you're dealing with brick and mortar, you're addressing housing needs at the urgency of now, and we're going to build that in conjunction with the county. And we'll still leave our, we won't put a whole lot more pressure on our city and counties to kind of monitor the daily day activity of NOM, that, that when you're doing the human services kinds of things, they won't have that press. So I'd like to, I, I'm going to push my attention and, and, and what I can do to make sure that we fund those four housing efforts first. And then the other ones, there are some that I am partial to, but we can get into those details later, because at least two of them, I think, the, I, I need to go back and look at what those are. But my first initial reaction is, let's build some housing, especially while we got the counter ready to do that. And we also had the opportunity to, to kind of make history in terms of supporting our community college, which is doing so well. We have the opportunity to, to help female and minority owned development right here in our hometown to be able to do something in that space. So, and there's one group that's already out there building, they're just looking for us to say, okay, you can do the second half. I, I think for me, that's a win on, on the housing. And we're down to 10 million and counting.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Johnson, Councilmember Freeman?
Thank you, Councilmember Cabir. I just wanted to agree that I think moving these projects forward is a great idea. I see no downside to putting additional funding into these projects that are, are ready to go. And I see no upside to waiting. So absolutely 100% support moving forward with this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Freeman?
Council, Councilmember Johnson covered it. I was going to say the exact same thing.
Thank you. Did you have your hand raised? Okay, yeah. Mayor Protam and then Councilmember Halsey Hyman.
Thank you, Councilmember, and thank you, colleagues. I'm going to associate myself with everything the mayor said. I think she teed up perfectly. The notion, we, we should probably go big with this next tranche for a number of reasons. The mayor, I mean, nailed the bandwidth issues with monitoring and managing so many smaller, it feels weird saying a million dollars smaller, but y'all know what I mean, smaller projects when you've got a big chunk of money. I think the funding, the, using 10 million to fund the affordable housing, the, the pre-existent ones that we probably would have done had we had the money, funding it, I think, I think is a, is a great idea and something we should seriously consider as a council. And I'll say with the rest of the tranche, I mean, I, you know, full disclosure, I've, in my budget request, I'm asking for significant down payment on, on the Marshall Plan or Marshall-type plan for legacy neighborhoods in our city. And, and this pitch is, I hope it provokes my fellow council members to think about big transformative things with this money. One of the cool things about going to, you know, events like National League of Cities and U.S. Conference of Mayor's, I thank the mayor for allowing me to attend this last one, as you hear, you have the colleagues, they're doing some stuff with ARPA money we hadn't even thought about, that we hadn't, you know, so it's good to get out and hear what people are doing, with, you know, things we thought we couldn't do, actually turns out you can do. So hearing some of the best practices from around the country. So I, I would just pitch beyond the 10 million for the, the housing projects that the mayor's already talked about, thinking about something big and transformative that forwards our values. I don't know when we'll see money like this again, and, you know, aside from our regular tax base. So I would, I'm pushing for something that's transformative and generational with the rest of it. So I'm just putting that out there now. Thank you, colleagues. Thank you, Councilmember Cabir.
Thank you. Councilmember Halsey Hyman?
I just want to say ditto, ditto, ditto. Basically, you know, with my academic hat, we have a lot of students who, first of all, insecurity, food insecurities, and also housing, which is a deterrent sometimes to retention. So definitely agree with the housing piece. Thank you, Durham Tech, for that innovative strategy. And again, like Mayor Protam, like, let's go big. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Williams, and then I think the manager also had something.
I didn't know we were at the point of throwing the ideas out, so I'll just add mine. You know, we, we don't talk about small businesses a lot on this council. And I know that, you know, there's a lot of risk that goes into that. I'm on this council for a reason, and I'm going to speak on that. So I would hope that my colleagues would be amenable to supporting a revolving loan fund or replenishing the lifeline that was provided when we were in the midst of the pandemic. There are still businesses trying their best to, and I mean, local small businesses, the criteria is already drafted, that are trying to just stay afloat. And these are the folks that are providing the local jobs. You know, these are the folks that we're trying to, you know, keep people employed, and also the ones who generate, you know, curate that character for Durham. So we don't have to put a lot toward it, but I do hope we can consider that.
Thank you. Manager Page?
Thank you for an, an opportunity to say a few words. I would also like to thank the, particularly the staff members, many of which are new to the organization, have been working on this since they hit, since they came in the, came in the front door of, of, of the 101 City Hall Plaza. So I wanted to publicly thank them, as well as our city attorney and her signing staff to this team, almost on a day-to-day basis, to make sure Durham does it right. One of the things that was really important to us, time-wise, because you all rely on us to implement your policy, and that is what we come to work every day to do. And we're going to be having some conversations, trying to connect some policy direction, ideas together, and, and make it work with the money. So today, we wanted to, we're very happy, because if we can go ahead and allocate in terms of our working and our planning, $10 million toward these affordable housing projects, which were not eligible until the final rules of ARPA came out last year. So we didn't even know we were going to be able to use this funding for, for that. But because these projects are shovel-ready, it helps us know that we can be more successful for the Fed's timeline if we can match some of their, their policies, which can be really stringent with what we're doing here on the ground. So we're going to take this conversation today as an allocation of $10 million toward affordable housing. Because I do numbers, and I do them all the time, that does leave another, you know, 10, 12 million dollars plus that the council still has for consideration for, for investing as we have conversations going through our budget, our CIP, our green equitable infrastructure dollars, and making it work for Durham. And so I just wanted to, wanted to say that. I don't know if the team has additional direction that you're looking for today, but just wanted, wanted to say that as, as the manager.
Thank you for that, City Manager. I was going to suggest that, after Mayor Protam made his comments, that just remember as you think about your budget request that you submitted, looking at those that this would be eligible funding source for. So you may want, as the manager said, think about, you know, allocating that as you go through that process. And then you don't, you have fewer dollars that are competing with the other departmental requests.
Councilmember Freeman, then Mayor O'Neil.
Thank you. I just had a question, just clarity-wise. I'm realizing that we're saying 10 million, but I know it's 10 million and change would really be half. So do we need to say 11? I just want to be clear.
We do not need a specific number today. We just wanted a commitment to the projects, and those will come back to you, because they need to update the financials around those projects, and so they will be coming back to you.
And then just secondly, I do want to make sure that this is going to be at the 100% not 70% level that we were talking about on the previous tranche.
Yeah. So, so on the housing projects, we are, you know, we, we know that those numbers have to, you know, that the financing sources have to match the project. So it, it would be further evaluated in terms of what that gap is. The city always comes in at the end of, of the funding stack. And so we, we, that's why we wanted to have the projects here. We wanted to reinforce that we had gone through an RFP process, that these housing developers have been in that RFP process already and competed, and are continuing to look at creative ways to develop their projects. So it was, you know, was important to us. It was about a year ago, I think it was February, was it February of 2022, when we were in this process? So we know we have some updates to do, but we're committed to all, and we're working as collaboratively with the county to make sure there's enough funding in place from ARPA on both sides to deliver all of the projects.
And acknowledging that a dollar in February of 2022 is probably like 80 something cents from today, so just realizing like it may be more, I do want to make sure that it's clearly stated we should support moving forward with the number that is necessary to match that number previously supplied. And then also, I did want to double check, do we still have our revolving loan fund with community, I'm sorry, Carolina Small Business? Because I didn't know it was, it wasn't there. I thought we had one.
Yes, we, we do still have the loan fund from 2020. It is still approximately, still approximately a million dollars in that loan fund. You will recall, last year, we rebooted it, we changed and reduced some of the requirements, changed some of the terminology, and we have made a few loans as a result of that. But we still have a lot of work to do. We, we, we need to engage our businesses, we need to find out exactly what they need to be successful. But to your, to respond to what you say, we do have approximately $1 million.
So to that point, I do want to note that there are a couple of things we can do. I know that there are more funds available now for small businesses with the SSBCI dollars available. I mean, I'm at the Rural Center, I can't not say it, that there are so many dollars that are available, and those matching funds that we can make available can go like four or five times further. And so even if we were to increase that 1 million to 2.5 million, it could actually do a lot to further the need, or to cover the needs of our small businesses and businesses in general within the city. And so it would be good to hear some, I guess, feedback from staff on whether or not that's something we should look at or not. But I, I do note that there's a lot of capital available right now, and it'd be nice to maximize.
Thank you. Mayor O'Neil?
Thank you, Councilwoman Cabir. I just wanted to make sure that we are all clear that, you know, we, we decided those monies, we were saying 10 million at this point, is that, but giving them the option of increasing that amount based upon inflation. Is that, can we get a thumbs up on all that? So we're, we're definitely looking to fund those four projects. We're starting them with an initial figure of 10 million, but keeping in mind, it may go up because of inflation, but they will let us know what that is. But saying, go ahead. I just want a thumbs up for everybody. We're good with--
Mayor--
So that JB can, I'm sorry, President Buxton can go out here with a smile on his face. All right, here we go. Thank you all. Great stuff. I am also, just in conclusion, I thank you all. That is just wonderful what you all are doing. I don't know that we could ever pay you all enough to do what you're about to undertake and what Attorney Kim's office has done. We look-- We look forward to this being transformational, and I am going to echo Mayor Protem, we need to go big with the remaining monies and make sure that we are not overtaxing you all and have some real stuff that we, we can put our hands on 10 and 20. Not saying that all things are, are not, you know, we're just not going to get this opportunity, again, I don't think. So, thank you. That would be my remarks.
Thank you. Really, really quickly, I had just one clarifying question around this. So yes to everything my colleagues have said. I know the staff's been incredible around this, so thank you. I've heard great things about your team out in the community and folks who've been having to work with you all and just the technical assistance you're providing people. It's a moment to be proud of our city staff. But we're 100% want to fund all four projects. I know some of that is based on also not just inflation, but on the county also committing. And so what happens if, you know, we're saying 10 plus some change, but what happens if we aren't going to get any county dollars? I just want to know where folks are on that.
So the way we have, the way we have to work in, in spaces that we've never been in like we are right now, is we take the 10 right now and we go to the county to get the rest, and if those conditions change and/or these numbers change, then we come back and we, we're going to be with you all a lot. The mayor's just talking about it earlier, in, in, in March, and so we're going to be working on this every, every, every single day. But we, we have had great conversations with them, you know, if they're, they're, they're committed, so we're gonna, you know, we're gonna take that, we're gonna take them at their word for now, and then if that changes, we'll, we'll be back.
Thank you, and I just wanted to thank President Buxton for being here. That's an amazing project as well, and yeah, but go, go big or go home, right? Then I'm passing on to the next person. I'm not sure who the next presentation is.
I think before we go to the next presentation, we'll take about a 10-minute break for human needs. Thank you all so much. That's great stuff.